Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Here.
Councilmember Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
All right. So, you want to do the swearing in before we do the flag salute? Let's stand and Representative Palet, would you be so kind as to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is swearing in of our three councilmembers. Representative Palet, you're in charge of this, so however you want to do it.
I am deeply honored to be invited to do this, so.
You can do them one at a time?
One at a time, and I guess if Nigel is. And state your name. I, I will hear it, having been duly elected to the office of, having been duly elected, and more council position number. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, that I will faithfully, discharge the duties of this office, discharge the duties of this office as prescribed by law, as prescribed by law, and to the best of. And I will support and maintain the. And I will support and maintain. The office of.
All right, Nigel.
I. elected to the office of. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially. I have asked the Honorable Lisa Hackinson, Washington Trial and Court Judge. I, Joseph Alden Marshall. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially. discharge the duties of this office as prescribed by law. and maintain. the United States.
All right, next item on the agenda is the election of the mayor. The chair is open to nominations. Councilmember Danuski.
I nominate David Baker for mayor. He's done an excellent job of representing the city locally and regionally and nationally, so I nominate David Baker.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare the nominations closed. Do we want to do, since there is nobody else running for the position of mayor, let's do this by acclamation, is that all right? Hearing no objections, all those in favor of me, David Baker, being mayor, say aye.
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 And since it is acclamation, there is no noes. Next item on the agenda then is the election of the deputy mayor. Chair declares the nominations open.
I'd like to nominate Nigel Herbig. He's served our city very well and he's one of the most dedicated public servants I've met.
Is there any other nominations for deputy mayor? Is there any other nominations for deputy mayor? Seeing none, by acclamation, we will elect Councilmember Herbig as deputy mayor, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition, so congratulations. Thank you, sir. And please, very much.
Except your name is Deborah.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments, and I've been noticing, and others have been noticing, there's just a ton of misinformation out there. And Ms. Bent, our Director of Community Development, if you could come up here and explain what the city is really trying to do with the mobile home issue, I'd really appreciate it. And affordable housing in Kenmore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the council adopted an affordable housing strategy last year, recognizing that affordable housing is very important to the community, further recognizing that the mobile home park communities provide a large extent of affordable housing in Kenmore. So that being said, the council are interested in how best to preserve existing affordable housing in these existing communities. And so they assigned this task to the Planning Commission to look at options and provide then recommendations to the council. So the Planning Commission are currently doing just that. And so tonight is an opportunity just to give an update to the council on where the Planning Commission are and what preliminarily some of the scenarios are that they're looking at to achieve that goal. And that is the later agenda item, where Laurie Anderson will go through that. Excuse me. There is a couple of public meetings coming up, and I would certainly encourage all tenants who live in the parks to attend, and that meeting is on January 30th, 7:00 PM here at City Hall. And the purpose of that meeting is to hear feedback and input from the people who actually live in these parks. There is also a meeting on January 23rd to meet with the park owners, to hear their perspectives. So the Planning Commission is trying to hear all points of view. They've also heard from representatives in the industry, so they're trying to get a really kind of robust look at the issues. They're also looking at the parks, and the recommendations that come forward to the council may be different for each park. So we're very early in the process, and we won't be expecting a recommendation from the Planning Commission for the next couple of months. And I see that the city manager wants to add something.
Just a question for you. Can you also tell the council and the audience about what's going on with the moratorium?
Yes. So, late last year, the council adopted a moratorium, and the purpose of the moratorium was to kind of put a hold on potential for redevelopment. And it allows the Planning Commission time to consider the recommendations. So during the moratorium, it means that a property owner could not submit a permit for redevelopment.
Of the mobile home park?
Of the mobile home park. So in a sense, it puts kind of a hold on any action and allows time to, you know, to consider this issue and bring forward a recommendation. So I know that there's some misinformation out there, that really the city is looking at park redevelopment, that's not true. So I just want to clarify that right now, and we certainly encourage everybody here tonight to stay involved in the process. That's kind of where we are, and again, later in the agenda, we'll go through some of the preliminary scenarios.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bent. The council is very concerned. These are all owned by private individuals, and because of the country you live in, they certainly can sell, they can do anything they want. I think all of us on the council want to make sure that we have affordable housing in this community to take care of whatever might happen. So that's what we're trying to do. So, thank you very much. And with that, we will start citizen comments. You have three minutes to talk to us about issues that are important to you.
Oh, and I also just want to clarify, tonight's discussion later on in the agenda is just an update, no council action or decision is expected.
Yeah, there will be a whole lot more discussion before anything like that is done. So, this is an opportunity to express your issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. There is a timer up on the screen behind us. There's a lot of people here, I know, that want to speak, and we need, we do have business to take care of also, but we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to hear from you. And so, the clerk, please call the first person.
Stacy Valenzuela.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Valenzuela, and I do live at Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park. We are thankful that you have put the memorandum in place and that you are protecting us currently from any redevelopment. However, affordable housing, the degree of it, and the people that do reside in our mobile home parks are seniors, veterans, low-income, fixed-income people, and it's important to us that we can stay here in the area and Kenmore as well. We would appreciate, and I think part of the problem with everybody panicking, is that in the scenarios, especially number one, it has details that refer to redevelopment and permit, and if the wording there was changed to preserving, protect before a permit is issued, it would help us and reassure us that we have that protection and that umbrella that we will not be developed in the near future. With scenario number two, it looks like the homeowners would lose their homes and be forced to relocate, which is costly. The amount of money that they're stating that we would receive for single and double wides is not nearly enough to even think about moving or relocating or anything like that based on the incomes of most of the people at the mobile home parks. And I just hope that you do take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
John Hendrickson.
Good evening, John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. Want to make some comments tonight about the process you all are making on trying to develop the ball field at St. Ed's. I think if you go back and look at your retreat discussion on it, you'll probably, I would hope you'd look and see that you really don't have enough, nearly enough information to make an informed decision. Seems like a very dysfunctional process that's been going on now for two and a half years. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars pursuing a project which is five, a lease of five, that will cost $5 million over 20 years, $250,000 a year. And you don't have, you don't have details of what your capacity needs are, what the alternatives are. And if you look at the very beginning of this process, this time two years ago, it's the first time you discussed it publicly, you talked about developing this project and that the mitigation cost for the drainage would be $40,000, and it would be done off-site. So you were ready to build this project, move it fast, through, pass it as quick as you could without public input, and it was going to cost $40,000. This is not just a wetland, and not just an underground spring, but it's a headwater of a stream that runs right into Lake Washington. All that was being ignored, and it's still being ignored. You brought in your consultants, and the stream that's always been at the southeast corner of that field, they moved that stream 500 feet away. Fish and Wildlife came in to review it and had to move it back. Why are you paying a consultant to do that? Why aren't you looking at what our surface water design manual requires? If you're going to displace water, you have to retain it and run it off naturally. That would be the right place to start, and you haven't done that. So how much is that going to cost? When you talked about alternatives with the school district, David Baker came in and said, "You're comparing apples to oranges. We're going to have two fields, two baseball fields, two soccer fields there. You can't do that at Arrowhead." Well, it's a specious argument. You know, definition of specious is superficially plausible but actually wrong, misleading in appearance, especially misleading in an attractive manner. The two fields you're going to have are for kids 10 and under only. You could do Arrowhead, you could do Wallace Swamp Creek Park, in that one area, we could put a ball field, it's not a wetland. You'd have those same two fields. So, you know, I think you need to start from scratch and look at having just a nice grass field up at St. Ed's and putting, you could have an artificial turf, you should have maybe at Morelands, could do it at Kenmore Elementary with a couple of fields in there. And you could look at building over the lake, not on the developer's property, but how much we'd like it if we, off the property, and we had a field over the water, we could also play tennis.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson.
John Isaac-Crumway.
Thank you. I'm from Inglewood East Mobile Home Park.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Pardon me?
State your name, please.
I'm John Crumway, I live at Inglewood East Mobile Home Park, across the street. I just wanted to repeat what the previous woman spoke that lives at Lakewood, is all of us folks that have invested, some of us up to $100,000 in our homes there, should that property sell, our homes are worthless. They can't be moved. There's no place to put them, there's no lots to buy. We would basically be thrown out on the streets with nothing. There's some special people that live in our park. We had 203-year-old women at the same time, Margaret and Marietta. Sadly, Marietta died last year, but she was vital and a contributor to the community. Margaret still volunteers at the senior center, and I see her carrying her trash up to the dumpsters, help her get it in the dumpster, but she's still carting her stuff up to the dumpster. And we, they lived there for 20, 30 years. It's a special place, it's along the river, there's no development possible there, I guess because it's a flood zone, and it's built on fill, so it's a delicate structure there. And I don't think there's any better use for it than to house these hundred-and-some seniors that are living there today, making it on low income and fixed income. And I just don't think that anything, I can't think of, it's such a special place that these two women live to be 103 years old, and are still, you know, Margaret's still vital in the community. It's a safe place, it's close to shopping, it's close to schools, it's close to the bank, it's close to the doctor's office that we have to go to quite a bit. So I just wanted to speak out and say that, that I hope you can keep that moratorium in place. I really, I really don't know what would come of us. We had a few people evicted from our place, and one of the women, she was doing quite well, she was recovering from knee surgery, Glenn's mom, and he got evicted, his mom got evicted with him. She died within weeks of getting evicted from her house. And that woman was walking around the quarter-mile track around our houses, recovering from knee surgery, the last time I saw her. The woman next door to her who was evicted had also suffered an early death. And it's actually life-threatening to seniors when you displace them. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up?
I think we're all acutely aware of seniors on fixed income, on those on lower income, those that are working hard to try to make a living, that live where they live because they have to, and there's others who really like that type of community. I lived in one of those communities when I was much younger. We truly understand, and believe me, we are very, very concerned about seniors and being priced out of housing and being kicked out of housing that they can afford. I mean, it's happening all over the region because of rents. We are all very, very concerned, but you have to remember, these are private property owners, and they can sort of do what they want with selling and redevelopment. We just want to make sure that those people who need it most are covered, the seniors in our community. A lot of them have lived here most of their lives, why should they be forced to go out and move totally away to a strange neighborhood with no friends, no, nothing? So, trust me, we are very concerned about it, we're very aware of it, and I know, I personally, I deal with a lot of senior issues on different various committees I'm on, and I think about this all the time. So, we are on your side, we just want to do what's right. So thank you very much for coming tonight, and I hope later on that we help clear this up a little bit more. So with that, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second, is there any, oh, yes. I do want to pull item G, I have a question on item G. And if there are no further comments, then we will approve, we will vote to approve the agenda with the exception of item G. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item G. This one is, it discusses the fees, and it returns the fees, and I've got some contradictions here. It returns the fees back to $126 on the agenda page. But if you go into it after the resolution and down to the line on code enforcement, the notice of violation appeal hearing is $125. So, you know, I don't mind the dollar difference, but let's make them equal. That's the only comment I have. It's a 125 or 126, it's great, just let's correct the type of wherever it is. So with that, I'm now happy with item G, and we can vote to approve item G. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second that, and so, then everybody in favor of approving item G, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item G passes. Next item on the agenda is business agenda. Mobile Home Park Update and Check-In. Ms. Bent, the Development Director, and Ms. Anderson, our Senior Planner.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. As Debbie described, the purpose of this agenda item tonight is just to give you an update on what the Planning Commission is talking about, sort of the history of this project, and it's particularly timely because we're about to have these two major public meetings, one on January 23rd for the property owners, and one on January 30th for the residents of the six mobile home parks. So Debbie described the history of it, I can tell you a little bit about what the Planning Commission has been doing. They started looking at this issue in October. They heard from representatives, both of the property owners and the homeowners, organized representatives, and then they began sort of fact-finding about the parks, and that continues, we're meeting actually with the owners this week to obtain more specific information. I know some of you had questions about the various parks. So they are doing that, and in the meantime, they've been thinking about different scenarios that might be appropriate. These are preliminary scenarios, they haven't even had their public input yet, so these may very well morph into something different. But the one issue that they were very concerned about was maintaining affordable housing. At the same time, they were maintaining the possibility for increased density in the community, they wanted to strike a balance there. So the two land use scenarios that they are considering would strike that balance. There's a third scenario, and there's an email in front of you that Chair Nugent had requested I provide, it's some modifications to the scenarios to clarify them. And there's a third scenario added there, it's a direct assistance scenario, so I won't spend a lot of time with that one, but I did want to just touch on the two scenarios, again, preliminarily, that they are talking about. So the first one would say that for certain mobile home parks, rezoning would designate the mobile home parks as a permitted use, they're currently a non-conformance in some of these zones. And then it would limit other permitted land uses. At the same time, the park owners would have the opportunity to transfer their density, their units presumably, to another property in the city where the density would be acceptable. And so this transfer of density, it's called a transfer of development rights, TDR, would be one scenario that they're looking at, and the property owner would be able to sell their lost density, there would be no loss of new units presumably, they'd just be in a different place. And in exchange for that, the parks would, parks would be preserved. Debbie mentioned that the Planning Commission has talked several times about treating the different parks differently, so I would not anticipate that it's kind of a one-size-fits-all for all of the six parks. The other component, and this was one of the things that Chair Nugent wanted me to add to the description of the scenario, talks about where these development rights would be transferred, and several of the commissioners are interested in looking at a regional TDR program, and we've talked both about a local scenario and a regional scenario, so we continue to do research on the regional TDR. There's currently a regional TDR program related to open space and farmland, it's a King County program. We actually are talking with the Director of that program just to kind of get some insights from him on how a regional TDR works. The second scenario would rezone certain parks for a higher density than they currently have, and then would require new development to provide affordable units at roughly at a level of income equivalent to the housing costs of the current homeowners. So in that scenario, the goal would be to include as many affordable units So in that scenario, the goal would be to include as many affordable units in the new development as are existing on the property. And then as part of that, we are discussing things like the right of first opportunity to rent for existing residents, and then for those who would not want to consider moving into a new unit, relocation assistance is being discussed. And again, these direct assistance strategies are something that ultimately the city council will discuss, the planning commission is kind of throwing these ideas out to flesh out the scenarios. So those are the two very preliminary scenarios, and again, the commission will have these two public meetings on the 23rd and the 30th, and then back at their regular meetings starting on February 6th. They'll listen to, you know, and discuss what they've heard, and whether there are, these are the preferred scenarios, whether there are modifications to these scenarios, whether they're something they haven't really discussed in the past. We expect that the commission recommendation will come to the council in the spring, hopefully in March, we'll see, and then the council would make the final decision.
Deputy Mayor?
So, scenario one, can you describe for me just briefly how it's different, or maybe it's the same, as kind of what Bothell's done with their overlay?
So Bothell's overlay is a totally different strategy.
Okay.
And the planning commission actually did discuss that strategy at their second or third meeting on the topic, there were several scenarios that we brought forward. So the Bothell scenario basically puts an overlay over the parks and then restricts, there is a list of permitted uses, but it's very limited, and it restricts to some degree doing anything on those properties but the mobile home parks unless you go through a public process and you get a comprehensive plan amendment and an associated zoning amendment. So basically, it says the property owner needs to go through this larger process to talk about impacts and sort of cite specific conditions that should be addressed.
Okay, but scenario one, we are talking about limiting permitted uses on the parks.
Correct.
So it's not a, it's not as restrictive as what Bothell's talking about, is that, is that just being discussed?
Well, Bothell's, Bothell's approach doesn't, to my knowledge, doesn't really tackle the question of preserving affordable housing and at the same time preserving the density.
Okay.
I think that's the difference, that the planning commission's early discussions basically were talking about how, yes, it may preserve the affordable housing, but what happened to the units that could have been developed on those properties?
Okay, thank you, that helps a lot.
Councilmember Smith?
Thanks Laurie for the update. I have just a couple of questions. One, can you tell me on the notification timeframe required in a development, and also the relocation assistance dollars, are each of those set by state statute, or is there flexibility?
No, currently, they're set by state statute, and it's a one year, you have to provide, if you're going to close a park, you have to provide a one-year notice to the residents that that is going to happen, that's a state requirement. In terms of relocation assistance, there is no mandated relocation assistance at the state level. It is available to a resident in the park, you can apply for that assistance, and I want to say, one is 2,500 and one is about 7,000, those are state numbers. And typically, the resident has to front the costs of the moving or the demolition or whatever happens, and then they can apply to have the funds reimbursed. I know in some cases, that's been quite burdensome for these property owners, so in, in some scenarios, the person developing the property has agreed to front the costs, and then they take the money and distribute it to the residents. So those are state requirements. We're checking on the feasibility, the planning commission has asked us to research whether the city could extend the timeframe, whether that would be practical or necessary. In the case of redevelopment, the city has also, or the commission has also suggested that the city consider relocation assistance.
So, and thank you for that end part on that, because that was actually my, the meat of what I was, I was trying to understand.
Oh, okay.
If the state statute is a de minimis level, or if that's something that we have flexibility on.
Yeah.
And so you're, you're trying to understand how that works.
Or sorting that out, correct.
Okay, then the only other question I had is, on the, in scenario number one, when you, it talks about the, the mobile home parks basically not being permitted under current zoning, it's a non-conforming use. So I'm curious, if, if it changes to a permitted use, then does that allow either whoever owns the home to either remodel or upgrade differently than if it were a non-conforming use, where sometimes you can't touch something without doing it, bringing everything completely up to code? I'm just wondering if that change in the, do you understand my question?
I do understand the question. I think we're kind of talking about different things here. So the, the mobile home park as an entity is a non-conformance. So I think in terms of expanding the mobile home park, or perhaps the community buildings of the mobile home park, those things might be affected by the non-conformance. But the treatment of the individual homes within the park, I do not believe that that is an issue in terms of upgrading, remodeling. In fact, the park next to City Hall, the owner there, Daniel Stoner, worked with Development Services recently, in the last year, and they did a number of life safety kinds of improvements to the homes in that community, and permits were issued for all of those upgrades.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if Brian has anything to add. You're good, okay.
Councilmember Danuski?
My question is in, on these two scenarios, it's kind of an Arch question.
Yeah.
Buying up the property that mobile homes are on, is that something that Arch does or doesn't do, or do you know?
Yeah, so I, and Arch, incidentally, has been working with us on this project, so they've been attending all the meetings and, and providing their insights. But Arch, I believe that the Housing Trust Fund has contributed money to purchase a mobile home park. I also know that the King County Housing Authority, separate from Arch, has in the past purchased mobile home parks. So yes, there are examples of parks being purchased. The planning commission's scenario three, the one that I didn't really get into too much, because that's a direct assistance strategy. The planning commission has been talking about their, certain organizations that facilitate purchase of a park by the actual residents of the park. So that's something that they've been talking about, perhaps with some direct assistance.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I have a question on scenario two.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds like the goal is to provide units at a similar level that people are paying now, and I suspect some of those are pretty low compared to median income.
Right.
And the same number. I think we heard tonight, one of the mobile home parks are at 100 units. I can't figure out how this could even be conceived as working financially.
Right.
To create a development that is 100 affordable units at those, those levels.
Yeah.
So I don't see, I don't understand why scenario two is even there.
Part of the logic is, is that's kind of the goal, we have to actually work through the practicality of that, and Arch is helping us run some numbers to see what that would actually look like, how feasible it would be.
Right.
So, again, these are the ideas, that they have to kind of be, again, we're still fact finding, we're still sort of truthing some of this, these scenarios, and that's one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, and we will be interested in seeing you guys again.
I did forget to mention that on the 30th, we have, we will have a translator available at the meeting to, to help with Spanish.
Good, good. If, if questions come up, please contact one of us, contact staff, we want to talk to you, we want to keep you informed, we want you to understand what's going on. Don't, don't rely on just stuff that's being posted on the internet because it is so filled with errors. Please, reach out, any one of the council members are happy to talk to you, city staff is happy to talk to you, we want to talk to you. So, thank you, and thank you guys for coming tonight. Next item on our agenda is council member, appoint, review and appoint, council committees. So there's a number of committees that we appoint to, and there are some that some of us have been serving on for some time, and there's others that people would love to transition off of and let somebody else have their chance. So, let's stop at the, at the top. Eastside Transportation Partnership. I am on that committee, and we have a vacant alternate spot, and we have a vacant voting And because of my appointment to the Sound Transit Board, I could theoretically go and be a member of that committee as, as a member of the board. So if there's people that want this position, I'm happy to release it. So, Seashore, who, Nigel, I saw your hand go up.
I'm interested in expanding over to ETP.
Okay.
If there's space.
Councilmember Curtis?
Same, I was on the committee until five years ago, when I was working more heavily at Evergreen Hospital, so I'm interested in rejoining that committee.
So you guys want the voting positions? I'm happy to give one up.
Assuming nobody else is champing at the bit.
Then, great, you two can be the, the two voting members, and anybody else interested in the alternate? All right, so I can fill in in the alternate position, and, and that will work. Seashore Transportation Forum, Nigel is currently our, our primary person there. I am, but I can also be there as Sound Transit representative, but still looking out for Kenmore. And the vacant, there's an alternative vacant. So as you can see, that's the first Friday of the month at 7:00 to 9:30, whereas ETP's second Friday of the month. So, anybody interested in doing that one? Nigel, do you want to stay doing that one?
It's a great group of people, yes, I'd love to.
It is fun there. All right, nobody else interested in alternate or a regular position on it? Fine, it'll stay Nigel and me, and the vacant can stay, alternate can stay vacant. All right, PIC, Public Issues Committee with Sound Cities Association. I am the main voting rep, and the alternate position is open, and I, because of my involvement with Sound Cities and being past president, I really like to stay on, stay on the PIC. So is anybody interested in the PIC?
I'm interested in the alternate position.
Okay, anybody else? So then if nobody's objecting, or whatever, then we'll let Councilmember Shrubnik go in as the alternate on the PIC. And believe me, there's a lot of times when I can't show up and you'll have to vote. All right, Wyra Eight. This one is got to do with salmon recovery in the water resource inventory area eight, which is Swamp Creek and basically all, all up around this area. So, and it also affects Bellevue and Kirkland and Lake Forest Park, so it's, it's a widespread I am currently serving as an alternate. I truly can't make the meetings because I am on the King County Board of Health, and it meets about the same time, so anybody interested in that?
I'm interested.
Great. Then Councilmember Marshall, if nobody else is wanting that voting position? Good. There's grant monies that are available sometimes, there's things that we're working on to kind of restore the Smamish River, the slough, so there are things you can do, and you'll meet some great people there. King County Library Board's dissolved. North Shore Park and Recreation, we have one voting seat there, and Brent Smith is there, and Stacy Danuski is the alternate, and it meets three or four times a year at the North Shore Senior Center. You want to stay on, Councilmember Smith?
Well, I had talked to Joe about it, and if he wants to swap with, or not even swap, if he wants to take over in that role, I'm more than happy to have him do so, and we've talked about it.
Do you want to stay on as alternate, or Stacy, do you want to stay on as alternate?
Well, do we want to, for continuity for a while, do you want to stay prime and Joe do alternate, because I can back up too.
Why don't?
Do you want to do that?
I would say, since it's very possible, there may be a new president at the beginning, it would also make sense to, to do the switch, the switch at the same time. So I would say, if you're fine, I'll take over as the alternate, and I'll let Joe just be the rep, and I'll go to, I'll be going to the next meeting or two anyway.
Yeah, that makes sense, we have some credibility on that one.
So, does that make sense, is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, you comfortable with that?
Okay. Wonderful. So then we have Councilmember Marshall as the voting member, and Councilmember Smith as the alternate. All right, last one that we do, North Shore Performing Arts Advisory Board. Mr. Smith, do you want to continue with that?
So that is something that I have, first of all, I don't even know how I got appointed that position, but I've never had.
You weren't here sometime, I think.
I, probably, and I, I can honestly say, I know nothing about what that entails. I've never, nobody's ever sent me to a meeting or said, show up at this time, so I really don't know what the commission even does, but I have never been involved in any capacity.
So somebody needs to reach out to them, because we did, we were active, and I know that they're kind of struggling, and I don't know what the board is doing, but I think it's probably a good idea if we stay involved.
So Deborah, was that something you were interested?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to.
Great.
See what that's about.
So it's only three or four times a year, I think, they've been meeting in the evenings, I can't say that for sure. But if you're happy with that, Councilmember Smith, we will.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead and appoint Councilmember Shrubnik to it. There's also tons of boards and committees that Sound City appoints to. There's 120, I believe, 127 different boards and committees. I'm on a number of them and have been for many years. I've termed out of some that I, they kicked me off of because I'd been there too long. So there's like, something like a five or six year limit on, if you go off for a year, then you can go back on. But there's a number of things that, that we do, and that's on one of the other, other lists there, that's just to sort of show you. But there's, there's different transportation committees, there's regional transit, there's Puget Sound Regional Council, there's five or six subdivisions under that where people can get appointed to. It's just, they come in your emails, you need to be active, you need to respond, because we certainly welcome your involvement. The Sound Cities one, the appointment list at the committees that are available, and whether the positions are occupied or not, you're free to, to apply for them, because sometimes we have members that don't show up for meetings, and so they're just looking for somebody else to apply for that, so you have a good chance of getting on, and those come out in September. So look for an email from Sound Cities Association, believe me, you'll be inundated with them anyway, but look for the ones in September that, that are asking for nominations of the committees. The other one is the National League of Cities. There are basically seven different main committees, there's transportation, there's environment, there's finance, there's law, there's the National League of Cities University, there's a number of different committees. You certainly are all eligible to join them, you have to, in the fall again, there will be something from the National League of Cities that will allow you to be appointed by them, and then if you're appointed by the state, you're, you'll be appointed by, by the committees. So those come out in the fall. Also, they come out September, October timeframe, look for those. National League of Cities has been a very good organization to become involved with, and Association of Washington Cities, we are a member there, and they will have their annual meeting in June. I'm not sure where it's going to be this year, but look at that, and if you have at all have an opportunity to go to the meeting, you will pick up a lot of things, it's council members, the mayor's from all over the state, every city in the state is a member of that, so, and there's, I think Village is as small as five people in the state. small as five people in the state that have a mayor and a couple councilmembers that go. So, um, it's, it's a good thing to do. Um, anyway, with that, then I guess we will, uh, go to staff report.
Question?
Yep.
Uh, when does the Advisory Council on Aging and Disability Services meet? It just says second Friday. It must not conflict-
Second Friday of the month.
So, it must not conflict with ETP?
No, ETP is at seven thirty in the morning, and that one, uh, the advisory committee starts at ten thirty, and the main committee starts at noon, and I serve on that. Uh, but that, we don't appoint to that, that's a Sound Cities appointment.
Okay.
Those other committees there are just an idea of some other committees that you can get yourselves appointed to, but other organizations do the appointing. I just like going to meetings, so. Anyway.
Maybe when that one comes up next time, I'd, let me know.
There's a line.
I'd be interested in, in joining that one.
Yeah, I will. There's a line, though, there's a bunch of people that would like to get on that one, but you'd be good. Um, okay, if there is nothing further that we want to talk about on that, um, staff report.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the first regular city council meeting of the year, and I want to welcome the new council members, and, uh, look forward to working with you. Uh, also, congratulations to Mayor Baker and Deputy Mayor Herbig on your election. Thank you for being willing to step into that role. We are meeting on a fifth Monday this month, the twenty-ninth. Uh, we have a couple things on that, in, that agenda, including the school district is going to come and present, um, on, about their, uh, school district ballot measures, and later on, at the, the, the next item here, the, the mayor has a question for you about that. Also, in February, I think February twentieth is a, is a Tuesday, it's the day after President's Day, and your council rules say that if a council meeting falls on a hol- on a, on a holiday, then you automat- your, your, your regular meeting's automatically that next day, or that Tuesday. Our February agendas are starting to shape, take shape, and it may look like we may not need to have a meeting on that Tuesday, so I'd give it a seventy-five percent chance right now that we don't need to have a meeting on that Tuesday of February twentieth. Then, fast forwarding to April, there are five Mondays in April, and I think we need to have, uh, meetings on all five of those Mondays, unfortunately. So, Chris Fabian, who's the founder of the Priority Based Budgeting Program, uh, nationally, he'll, he's actually going to be in Tacoma, uh, the first weekend of April, and, uh, we thought we'd take advantage of that and have him come and talk to you about, uh, Priority Based Bud- Budgeting on Monday, April second, which moves the Jurassic Parliament to that last Monday in April, April thirtieth. So, that's kind of just, uh, if you could keep all five of your Mondays, uh, available for council meetings in April. Also, on January twenty-fifth-
Councilmember Curtis has something on that.
So, on a second, uh, before you had us reserve five thirty to nine thirty, back to a normal time, councilmember-
Oh, thank you, yes, uh, I'm assuming that's a seven o'clock start time, yes, but on April thirtieth, assume a five thirty start time, and we'll send you an email about January twenty-fifth, we have an open house for walkways and waterways, the transportation portion in particular, so want to drive and sixty-eighth Avenue sidewalks and bike lanes, we plan on providing an, an open house there. This, this mailer that you have is being sent to, um, all of our residents citywide, you should see it in the mail probably next week. Um, and then, we plan on doing a similar open house, probably in, uh, February or March, for the waterways portion. Because of, uh, some design issues and, and things, we're not quite sure of that date, but we'll do a similar mailer for the, uh, for the waterways portion, have a similar open house, again, probably in February or March, so stay tuned on that. And, uh, that's all I have.
All right. Comments, initiatives, um, and reports. Let's, um, at least start this year out with, uh, councilmember Smith.
Well, that's unusual. No, I just, uh, I'd like to welcome the Honorable Joseph Marshall and the Honorable Deborah Shrebnik to the, uh, council. It's, uh, actually, I really enjoyed, uh, the time at the retreat and getting to know both of you, and then just spending time with my peers up here. It was a, it was a good couple of days to go through a lot of stuff, and I couldn't believe how efficient we were, so, thank you, and, and I look forward to having our two new voices onboard.
Thank you. Councilmember Marshall?
Hey, I just wanted to thank all my supporters, I see several of them are, are still here, uh, in the room. Thanks to my, my supporters across the city of Kenmore. My wife, Cecilia, and my boys, Carlos and Julie, my booth, mother and father, Bill and Kenmore. Really look forward to echo councilmembers Matt and Mayor Scott. Appreciate, uh, your guidance, and look forward to, oh, I saw that the North Shore School District equity, there are over, roughly ninety-four languages spoken in the North Shore. Custom home is some part, but a beautiful diversity. A diversity, contributions of guests from all our citizens, all over the world. Look forward to working with the city, wildlife, and our habitat, and our environment.
Councilmember Curtis?
I'd just like to, uh, comment on the retreat as well. Uh, that was probably the fattest book, uh, that I have ever seen. The staff did a great job of preparing, uh, us for that retreat. I reassure Deborah and Joe that, uh, the reading slacks off after the first year or so. Um, there's a lot of information to get up to speed, but I'm sure you guys are going to do a great job. You've contributed, contributed during the retreat, and I thought we, we did get through an amazing amount of information, so I, I'm looking forward to this year.
Councilmember Shrebnik?
Well, I just want to echo what folks said about the retreat. It was great getting to know everybody, and it was incredibly efficient, and it was really fun, and, um, I'm excited to begin serving and, uh, move forward with our many, uh, roadway, park, and waterfront initiatives.
Councilmember Danuski?
Um, there's a lot of echoing by the time we get down to me, but, welcome, Joe, and welcome, Deb, and, uh, it was a very good retreat, that's all.
Deputy Mayor?
Keep waiting for Alan to respond when he says that. Um, not a whole lot to add, uh, as usual, Brent stole what I was going to say. Um, bringing in two new people into the body like this is, uh, is an interesting thing to do, because we work so closely together, we have different ideas, we have different values, but we're all trying to make Kenmore a better place, and getting everybody together for the retreat and spending that time with, with Deb and with Joe, and, um, was valuable, and I think we made a lot of progress, I think we got to know each other, and I look forward to working with you guys over the next four years. I think we're going to do a lot of good, uh, here in Kenmore. Um, I also want to thank, uh, everybody up here for, um, your confidence in me and, and for, um, electing me deputy mayor, that means a lot, and I really appreciate it. Um, let's go do this thing, thank you.
Okay, I gotta add the same thing, I mean, the retreat was really, really good, and I'm very, very pleased with the way that, um, both Joe and Deb have, have just fit right in. Over the years, because this council has worked so good together, you tend to become productive, protective, you really, really want things to continue. We are doing such great things in this community that, once you get rolling, you want to keep rolling. So, I really welcome you both, I think you're going to be tremendous assets. Um, the time we had at the, uh, retreat was certainly valuable, and, um, you guys are awesome. I, I can tell this is going to be really good. All right, now for the other stuff. You will find that I make you stay here longer because there's things that goes on, so. Um, so, North Shore School District, they're coming to talk to us, as Rob said, on the twenty-ninth, I believe it is, and, uh, basically, they're going to ask for our support with three, uh, bond issues that, uh, we have supported in the past, and they're, again, going to ask for, probably ask for a resolution, which we've done before, uh, supporting, uh, those measures, and, um, what were the three?
So, there's a, there's a regular education levy, a technology levy, and then a bond measure for capital.
Right, and these are all issuance, uh, reissuance of, of levies that they've already approved before. So, it will go out before the voters, and we have traditionally, um, supported the school district, so, um, if somebody has an objection, then we won't have the resolution drafted, but if you're all, um, thinking that after hearing, um, the director, um, and what she has to tell us, then we'll have that resolution ready that we can then pass in support. So, um, not asking you to support it until, uh, we hear about it, but, uh, I just would like to have it ready if, uh, if in case we do. So, anyway.
And, Your Honor, if I could just add to that, so, I believe, and, and our city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe under state law that, um, cities are not allowed to use city resources to support or oppose ballot measures, with this one exception, you are allowed to, um, adopt a resolution in support or against, uh, but beyond that, we can't use city resources or city time for supporting or, or being against, uh, but this is one exception where you're allowed to use your positions as city council members to show support or not.
That's correct. All right, councilmember Curtis?
So, uh, when the school district comes, maybe you could ask them to specifically address on the bond issue, the performing arts, um, uh-
I think, I, we, you could talk to-
Place that's going to be developed.
-Dr. Reed about that offline, because I'm not sure how much the school district has to do with that.
Oh, okay.
Tends to be a different board.
I, I would be interested in some clarification, yeah.
Yeah, fine.
I think what you're referring to is the, the piece of the bond measure that's for the new Inglemore Performing-
Correct, that's the one I'm talking about.
No, that's not what we're talking, I don't think that's what we're talking about.
That's the one I'm talking about. It's part of the school district, the board, the bond.
But I don't know if that's what they're going to be talking to us about with the, the supporting the bond issues. Is it in there? Okay, fine, then yes, we will.
Is it the concert hall?
Tell them to come prepared.
The Inglemore campus? Yeah, okay.
Um, okay, then, go ahead and draw up that resolution and, and at least have it ready. Um, so, I'm meeting with the Colonel, I think it's this next week, in charge of the locks. Um, we drafted a letter, um, in support of repair of the Ballard locks, because they're falling apart. We got, uh, all thirty-eight cities in Ken- in, uh, King County, just all the mayors to sign on. That's never happened before. Um, and then, we got a call from the mayor of Seattle, they wanted to sign on, and that really has never happened before, and then the King County Executive said he wanted to sign on. So, the la- the, 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 the letter that I had drafted in order to support this, um, was very well received by the Army Corps of Engineers, and Senator Murray made comments about it, and she is, uh, trying to get funding in there to do this. The locks are falling apart. If those locks fail, the big locks are the ones that are potentially going to fail, the doors, if those locks fail, this lake will be drained to the height of the sound in two and a half days. It's really critical, that means that both bridges are gone, and that, but as a result of us doing those letters, um, and, um, getting the signatures and taking an active role in this, um, the Corps has got us in, uh, in their request for money this next year to, uh, do a complete study on sediment in preparation for dredging, so, um, anyway, I'm meeting with the Colonel, and I'm going on a to- boat tour with the Colonel and a couple of other people, um, here, I think, this next week, um, to see the locks from a different angle and try to understand what's going on. So, anyway, uh, I'm meeting with Mayor Durkin tomorrow, um, I'm looking forward to that, to, when, oh, Mike McGinn was mayor of Seattle, this, the suburban cities, we all had a really good relationship with Seattle. We could talk to them, we could, we could, uh, get our point of view across, we could get them to consider things. When, um, McGinn was voted out of office, oh my goodness, we can't, we can't talk to them. I've been driving, trying for over three years to get a meeting with the Seattle City Councilperson who has the district along One Forty-Fifth Street, because of the concerns we have here with the way the constriction happens at One Forty-Fifth and Five Twenty-Two, won't talk to us, won't have a meeting with us, they won't have a meeting with Shoreline, so, we're not being singled out. And so, I am really, really interested in having this meeting tomorrow with Mayor Durkin to see if we can't get a working relationship again, because there are some issues that we really need to work with them, that affect us. They're not on our borders, but they affect us, and they affect our residents, so I'm looking forward to that meeting tomorrow. Um, I met with, um, Senators Fortunato and Harmsworth, um, yesterday, I think it was, and, um, they're, they know about Kenmore. I, every opportunity I have to talking with somebody, um, I always mention Kenmore and what our, what our stuff is, and, uh, I'm, I'm slowly but surely branching out to the number of, of representatives and senators that I get to talk with, so, that's good. Last thing, um, I think you all have been getting emails, I know Nigel and I have, on an issue up at Arrowhead and Fifty-Eighth, and junk cars and a lawn, and, uh, automobile repair business going on. Can we get something back from, a little bit more concrete on what we could do, what could be done, what, whatever?
Are you, are you talking about Arrowhead Point?
Yeah, I guess so. Is that bonus Spencer?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We're actually meeting with the neighbors, uh, this coming, uh, Thursday at, I believe, five thirty PM, five thirty? Yep, and I'll be there, um, our legal counsel will be there, Brian Hampson will have a lead, and he'll talk to the neighbors about what's been done so far, and what our plan of attack is moving forward.
Is, is that meeting here?
Yep. And council's welcome to come, as long as we don't have a quorum, we haven't, it's not a meeting we're, we're noticing, but, so if you're interested in coming, please let us know, just so we make sure we don't have a quorum.
And that's Thursday night, you said?
Yep.
Yeah, it is, um, actually on my calendar, because they asked me to come, uh, in an email a couple, three weeks ago, and I said, "Yes, I would be happy to be there," so I will be there.
Great.
And Rob, I, unfortunately, you know, I, I helped, um, organize the previous meeting, or at least help you guys get together the previous meeting with these folks, um, last year, and I would love to be there on Thursday, unfortunately, I can't, so I was hoping that we could, um, either talk later on the phone this week, or maybe during staff report next Monday, we could just get a quick update on-
You bet.
-on what's happening. Thank you.
Most definitely.
Uh, Rob, I, I think I'd like to be there, um, I've been getting, uh, some contact from them as well, and from that area, but, um, and I think it's right at the end of our meeting, anyway, on Thursday, so, yeah.
All right. If there's no further business to come before us-
Hey, Your Honor, um, do you want to talk about, uh, what you're doing first thing tomorrow morning?
Yes. At seven forty-five, I'm going to hang out in front of a restaurant. The new restaurant up at, across from Arrowhead is opening officially tomorrow and I want to be their first customer and I want to give them their first dollar bill. So, I will be there early and I will be waiting for it to open. So, that restaurant is finally open and I'm excited about it.
And then, what time is that?
They're doing breakfast service.
Okay.
That's great.
Yep. 8:00 AM is when they open tomorrow and, and then you've got to rush to a meeting with Mayor Durkin in Seattle at nine, so.
So, I'm going to be getting something to go real fast and my wife is going to sit there and eat, so. Well, tell me about it. That's what I'm concerned with.
If you want me to take that restaurant assignment for you while you go to Seattle.
Why, you want to go up there? I called him and told him I wanted to. Because a little bird told me when they were opening, so I wanted to, to make sure that I, that he knew I was coming, so, anyway.
Mayor, did you want to mention anything else?
Well, yeah, I suppose I can take, if you guys don't mind, I can take a couple of minutes. This is kind of important to me. I think most of you know I was adopted and that was many, many years ago. And it was just an arrangement between mothers and my mother always told me and I just never thought too much about it because my mom's my mom. You know, there's not going to be a replacement for that. But I started doing some research in genealogy a number of years ago and one of my neighbors, some of you remember Burt Hubka, when she served on the council for that short period, her daughter was very much into genealogy and she started looking for me. And she found out that I go all the way back from, to John Alden and Priscilla off the Mayflower. And so, I'm out there trying to tie up some loose ends and some links and one of my aunts got ahold of me. And so, today for the first time, I talked to my sister. And I have another sister and a brother and they're both very excited to know me and they can't wait to talk to me. So, anyway, that's what happened. Anyway, yeah, you know, after all these years to know you got a sister and talk to her and know that she's happy they found you, they found me? I mean, come on, that's awesome. Anyway, if there's no further business to come in front of us, we're adjourned.